Alexis and Bill in the waiting room.
Okay. Well, it is six thirty-one. So I'll call us to order of our planning board meeting of October 5th. And I will call the roll. Myself, John present. Rebecca is excused this evening, as is Phil. Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Yep.
Mark?
Here.
Susan?
Yeah.
And alternate members, Zach Terrell's select board is not present. Michael Bouchard?
Present.
And Peter Julia. So I will seat you as a voting member this evening.
Thank you Chair.
And I think we'll get through the minutes before we look at the attendance of the HOP committee. Just to keep things in official order. All right, so we have minutes from the September twenty-first and the September ninth meetings. And so I guess we should start, wait. Seventh. September ninth. Which one is it actually?
It would be the seventh.
We're the seventh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
That would be September seventh, not September ninth.
Oh, Alexis is reminding us she's in the waiting room. Okay, so let's start with the minutes from September seventh then. I noticed one thing that's not correct, but I actually misspoke, so that's not really a question to the minutes. It's a question to myself. Not substantive really, just misnaming a committee. Or board, whatever.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September seventh?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
So the minutes of September seventh are approved. So moving on then to the minutes of September twenty-first, which was our downtown and I guess more so than downtown residential walking tour. To look at all of our lot sizes and dimensional requirements and all that. So that's the September twenty-first meeting. Joseph? Is the Jeff Day issue resolved yet?
Oh, well, he has.
I know, it wouldn't change the minutes, I just mean for like announcing to the board or whatever, it said.
Yeah, we did receive a communication from him that he will be needing to step away and will not, does not feel to be able to give the requisite amount of time to the board at this time.
Other check-in before saying something? Looking around.
Make a motion to accept the September twenty-first or twenty-first minutes?
We have a motion and a second to approve the September twenty-first minutes. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, the minutes are approved from September twenty-first. And so before we go on, yeah, it's just worth noting that Jeff Day, who was appointed by the time of our last planning board meeting, has stepped down before the next one, which might be a record.
He had not been sworn in.
Oh, not been sworn in yet, okay.
For purposes of like calculating who's in it. So he was duly appointed by the select board.
Yes. All right. Public comments not related to the business on the agenda. Are there any public comments not related to our business this evening? Reports of committees, I do believe we have a few of those. So.
Communications.
Oh, communications received, sorry, yes. Thank you. Moving ahead.
Yeah, so I think the major communication was Jeff Day's communication and then also this other item, which I did, I put as other business. But with regards to Mountain View Farms, a follow-up from the update that we've given, it might have been two months ago now, with regards to Wildflower Lane. So I have some paper up here for you and then we can, I can hold off on explaining that in more detail until I have other business, just to not run into the committee reports and things.
Okay. It's not on here, but CIP, Sue, any new reports?
Well, we met today, as a matter of fact, and went over all the work that they've been doing. Anne and Scott Whedon have been meeting with all the department heads. And they've presented everything to us as of today, so we really don't have a lot to report. But we reviewed it all today and we will be meeting again on, I think it's the twenty-fourth, isn't it Joseph?
I believe that.
Change it to the twenty-fourth. The budget committee will meet that day and then I think it's that afternoon, we'll be meeting with some of the department heads to kind of clarify a few things.
Okay.
And that's it for now.
All right, sounds good, thank you. So Lakes Region Planning Commission, I have some reporting from there. And at our last meeting, which was on, I guess, September twenty-fifth, I believe it was. What day was it, right around there, was that September twenty-fifth?
That was a Monday.
Okay, yeah, so September twenty-fifth. We had a meeting and the majority of the meeting was devoted to a discussion of housing. And whether or not and how to adopt the regional housing assessment for the Lakes Region Planning Commission. And so that was the majority of our meeting. We had a report from New Hampshire Housing. We talked about the housing assessment that's been online, I guess, since last winter or spring. And we, even earlier actually, last fall. It's been around for a while at this point, it's been circulating, the draft of that assessment. And it was also a tail end discussion of economic development opportunities and. So Jeff Hayes, the director, sees these issues as tied together, economic development and having a strong workforce who is, were able to afford our houses in the region. So all the commissioners were tasked with going back to their towns, like our planning boards and such. And discussing whether or not we would like to adopt the housing assessment for the Lakes Region. And I think the assumption is that the answer is yes, but the sticking point is, and this is what they want more guidance on. Is whether to adopt it with or without the fair share tables for each town. So this has to do with workforce housing and each town being given a fair share of what would be expected of them to equitably develop workforce housing around the entire state and for us around your region. And so it seems that some towns are pushing back and don't want this included for potential legal ramifications of having those numbers out there. And so a discussion ensued. And it seemed like it's probably going to pass either way. For me personally, I was not fully pleased with the way some of the discussion was presented and. And I guess I let that be known at the meeting. And the following day, a letter came, a page and a half letter from Jeff Hayes, explaining the importance of this. And why perhaps he would recommend that the fair share not be included. So I am looking for your input, any input guidance you can give me as a commissioner to vote or not vote on including the fair share assessments. So, yeah, so there's this one page in there that has a table, broken down by town, of what would be considered the fair share of workforce housing. So you remember workforce housing, right, it's basically like median income and below, so it's a pretty big chunk. And we've talked about this in the housing committee and here. I don't want to go into redefining these issues, but I mean, some of the things that kind of troubled me was, A, all the numbers are out, they've been out there for like a year at this point. And anybody who wants those numbers has them anyway. And to me, it looks a little bit like, you know, we're not hiding the numbers, they're there. You know, I don't know how many dozens or thousands of people, probably not thousands, but lots of people have downloaded these numbers already. So the cat's kind of out of the bag as far as I'm concerned. And I think the point that was made is, do we want to endorse these numbers? Yes, they're public already, but do we want to have ourselves endorse these numbers? I mean, I ask on the flip side, does it look like we have something to hide by having them be public and then not like saying, taking it back out of the report after they're public? So there's all of those issues. I mean, I'm reading this letter here, it was based on a percentage of regional population, how they were doled out to each of the thirty-one municipalities. Which is in fact not entirely true, it's also based on labor market areas and other analysis as well. So it was a little bit more of a complex analysis than just dividing it up by town, by town population. It actually did include like labor issues and what the workforce looks like locally. Yeah, so, so I'm just kind of, he just basically summed up the arguments he made at the meeting. So the executive board of the commission has already recommended adoption without the fair share table. But it's still up to the full commission to adopt or not adopt with that table. The point was made about some towns not having access to water and sewer and therefore it's harder for them to meet their fair share requirements. I would also point out that if developers don't want to go there because of water and sewer. I mean, it's really enforcement is up to developers, like suing basically. So if they don't see an opportunity there, they're probably not going to sue unless the zoning ordinance is exclusionary. In which case, they probably would. So if you have a non-exclusionary zoning ordinance, there's probably no reason to actually, or no grounds really to even sue. Anyway, that was mentioned, you know, the terrain of certain towns not being amenable to affordable housing. The lack of water and sewer not being amenable to affordable housing. And therefore you can't meet the low-income housing quota, as it says here, which is not exactly what it is. Workforce housing is not always low-income housing. And the fair share is not exactly a quota, the way it's being treated. I suppose one could argue the definition of quota, but like, seems a stretch to me. It is advisable to consider how sustainable it is to build high-density subsidized low-income housing. Again, I think that's a mischaracterization of what the workforce housing RSA is actually about. It can include that, it can also include market rate housing, a lot of other things. And to assume it's only like high-density subsidized low-income housing, I think is a mischaracterization. And therefore we should develop a workforce that can actually afford to buy our market rate houses. Which I would love to see. However, there are still people with needs right now for housing that can't afford houses. And to have people with, I mean, not having a workforce able to afford houses at the current rates is a national issue right now. And I doubt the Lakes Region is going to solve that issue in the short term. And in the short term, we still have housing needs. Anyway, all that aside, I have some, I mean, I'd love to see that happen, I don't necessarily see it as a holistic approach, it's part of an approach.
Is your fear that if those numbers aren't included, the towns won't strive to achieve that goal?
You know, personally, I'd be willing to adopt either way. I'm troubled by how it was presented, which seems quite misleading to me. And I said this at the meeting, I said, I prefer to see the numbers in there rather than us looking like we're hiding the numbers after they're already out. And I think the workforce housing ordinance personally is good because we do need housing for our workforce. And it's a way of getting that to happen. And it's not there right now, affordable housing for our workforce. I mean, partially there, but it's definitely not where it needs to be. And if they wanted to take it out, I wouldn't mind so much, I think it's the wrong choice, but I could go along with that. I was just really troubled by like what I saw, it's just misleading arguments, like all the way down the line. And the whole tenor of the debate just kind of pushed me the wrong way. So anyway, that's my take on this whole thing. I don't know if you have any guidance for me going into this and casting a vote at our next meeting or meeting afterward, whenever it happens. Where I can just use my own judgment.
When's your next meeting that you have, you're going to be voting?
We might vote at our next meeting, which is always the last Monday of the month, whichever day that would be in October.
Can you let us know, John?
Monday, the, I guess it would be the thirtieth, yeah.
Do you have, off the top of your head, how many units they're saying that Plymouth should have and how many you currently have?
I can look it up. I mean, we do need more, all towns need more. And we're doing pretty well comparatively on providing them. But given our income levels, we also need more. And, I mean, I don't think any of the numbers are really very surprising. And.
Well, it's kind of, the reason I asked, I was thinking back through the study.
Yeah.
And obviously you said this is thirty-one towns and I know when, it's Barrett, right? When Barrett did their work, I think a lot of the comparisons were to like the closest five or six towns. And compared to those towns, it seemed like we were actually doing quite well compared to those towns.
Yeah. And we are doing pretty well.
Yeah.
I mean, so Lakes Region also includes Laconia and other towns that have much higher, Franklin, other towns that have higher needs. But also are providing a lot already, just like we are in Moore.
I think if the numbers are already public, I don't know why they wouldn't be a part of.
The concern is that if we endorse them, they become more meaningful by adopting that part of the.
I think it's still.
If someone wants to sue us, they've already got the numbers. And at this point, in my opinion, it looks like we're hiding them. I will say that there's every likelihood that this is going to pass without that included. The executive committee apparently voted like unanimously, like at least whoever was at the meeting. And it looks like most of the commissioners are on board with taking it out. I don't think it's the end of the world if we take it out. I just wish we had a more honest discussion.
I think it's fine to include on my.
Can I get back at you on that? I think I'd like.
We have another meeting before then.
I just would like to know more about, I think I have not put myself into it to know enough about it. So I think I would like to see a little more, but the way it says, I don't see any.
Okay, well, if I forget Joseph, you can put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. So that's the Lakes Region Planning Commission. So the HOP committee will be talking about a lot of the stuff we've been doing a little bit later in the agenda. We've been having weekly meetings and making progress. And we have some outreach plans for this month especially, as we go into the kind of big push for zoning amendment season. And, but we'll talk more about some of the details of that in a few minutes, so I don't know if there's too much to add right now. I accept to like thank all the members of the committee for all the hard work, I know. Thank you.
I would agree, that's.
Been a lot of work.
Been a lot of work and I appreciate all the members that have been showing up. We think as a planning board, we're doing quite a bit. The HOP grant members, Patty and Matt and Brian.
And Ryan.
Brian and Bruce and it's, they're putting in a lot of hours. And it's not just the hour that, or hour, two hours that we may meet at that meeting. There's a lot of thought and a lot of reading that goes along with it. And some have even shown up for other meetings and I commend the group that the town put together to serve on that committee.
So Mike, while you have the floor, this is not exactly a committee report, but would you like to say anything about the housing discussion that happened in Manchester?
Yes, so yesterday, I went to the New Hampshire Housing and Economy two thousand twenty-three conference. It was spectacular to be there. There, I'm guessing there must have been two hundred, two, give or take fifty at this conference. A lot of bankers, a lot of real estate people. They assembled the speakers for this conference that were probably known nationally to come and speak. And they didn't just talk about today, they went back geographically, all over the United States, went back early nineteen hundreds. In-depth explanation of what's going on with the housing right now, it was phenomenal. Judy was there. A little like a homecoming, Judy and I was there, we had a couple of great discussions. Flora from Bank of New Hampshire was there, Amy from the Town of Plymouth was there. And the people that I met, it was just great. And boy, I don't think there was any disagreement from anybody there. It, it was amazing. And some of the speakers, some of the stuff that I wrote down, I took a lot of notes from the speakers. Just amazing, but they talked about conversion of commercial office space in, say, Manchester and Concord specifically. Because when COVID happened, everybody realized they could work from home. And when COVID was over, there, I can still work from home. So a lot of those office buildings were being underutilized. And right now, there is a huge push and a huge momentum right now to convert them. The Citizens Bank on Elm Street in Manchester got converted. I'm not sure how many units, but I moved two young men in there a week ago into an apartment, two-bedroom. And it's kind of neat how they can take this huge block that only has windows on the outside and still configure hallways and windows. And one of the apartment that I helped move in had one bedroom facing the outside with a window and one did not. So my question was, after, I got a chance to talk to one of them, how does that work? And they explained with sprinklers and two ways of egress to leave, once you leave the front door. Two different ways to leave the hallway to get out. That satisfies the safety impact. So they are making some unbelievably beautiful apartments in some of these downtown cities like Manchester, Concord. Some of the ceilings are very high, they're able to put little lofts that don't quite have the full eight-foot or seven-foot ceiling. They showed a lot of nice pictures and how a lot of the communities are very welcoming with this. But they said the number one problem, that they could put a lot more apartments in these cities. The number one problem, they said over and over and over and over again was parking. They can't solve the parking problem. In Manchester and Concord, there is a little bit more, it's, they were surprised how a lot of the folks that were renting were okay without a car. Because there is no place to park your car. In Boston, it's a given, you can get by without a car, but they didn't realize they could do that in Concord and Manchester. And they are doing that, people are receptive, they don't have to have their car. It's working really well there. So, am I okay to keep going, because?
I shouldn't go too long, but if you want to give a little bit more of a summary?
I won't go over another hour.
Thank you.
I'll assume that's a joke.
So they talked about workforce housing a lot. And they didn't get into the definition of what it meant, but I did get a chance to talk to a couple of the speakers after. And there was, there did seem to be some agreement, and I don't want to speak for them, that maybe workforce housing, and this might solve your problem with Lakes Region. Maybe it's not identifying, maybe it's too broadly defined for workforce housing. And I think that's where a lot of people get hung up. There's no one that doesn't want workforce housing as far as what most people think of it. And they said, if we can solve parking, we can solve housing. That in New Hampshire, Maine, we are vehicle-driven states, a lot of the upper. They talked about seventy-nine E quite a bit, there is that going on. I asked whether there is a distinction between seventy-nine E, if it freezes the tax rate, freezes the assessment, or freezes the dollar amount. If it freezes the dollar amount, that's considerable savings. Because in ten years, the taxes for your neighbors who don't do anything could double and your taxes will stay the same, whether you do anything or not.
Can I ask if they were talking about any particular provision of seventy-nine E? There's the one for the conversions, there's the housing opportunity one. So it's not the, it's not the housing opportunity zone?
No, it was the conversions. They talked, had a huge segment on short-term rentals. There was a gentleman who was in the state legislature. At one point, he's from the North Conway area, and how drastic short-term rentals are. And it's devastating, the apartments in that area, that you can't, people that want to work in the restaurants, work in the food service. They can't find apartments up there because all the apartments are geared towards very short stays, whether a weekend, three days, one day, a week. And they're having a major problem with that, they're trying to figure out how to solve that now. There's I guess a couple of definitions of what short-term rentals are. But that is a huge problem, especially up in the North Conway area. In some towns, they're making, with the short-term rentals, they're making them sign up on a list so that they can get a fee from all those individuals. And the big thing is, they're even taking single-family homes and doing short-term, being Airbnb and several other services. And there's no one accountable, and that's the big thing, there's no one accountable, when someone lives there, you know who to go to talk to. But if the town can get a list of someone, a phone number and a person, if it's loud, they go talk to them. Otherwise, you go to the person being loud, you just got to talk to them again three days later because it's someone different.
I will say that it's a huge issue in New Hampshire, especially like Conway and places like that. It is not too much of an issue in Plymouth, so. Good for us at this point.
So the big thing was responsibility, noise, parking, party, trash. So then we had this guy, and I'm skipping along, but we had this guy named Ed Pinto, who was the keynote speaker at the end. This guy was phenomenal, he's, he talked about San Francisco, he talked about all these cities. And what the key was to make the city light up. And you can apply that to Plymouth, you can apply it to any place. And he basically said, the, he looked at all the stats and it's all about the numbers. And he said, based upon where we see new building, and then you see the housing, everybody's happy, housing prices come down. We are, should be in a phase of building a lot. It's always in phases. And we're not building very much, and that's the problem right now. There's, and the building will bring the prices down. He's concerned that there's a lot of McMansions being built, especially Connecticut, a lot of southern New England. And those spaces for those McMansions that are worth one or two, three million dollars could have. And those spaces for those McMansions that are worth one or two, $3 million, could have in that same footprint, two or three houses. And we've moved away from where we had two or three houses for many years. We've gotten two involved in single-family homes that are taking up for, and very much being underutilized. So he had a lot of great suggestions that could be used in Plymouth, could be used in any community. And he talked about, I think it was San Francisco or somewhere, they took where it was only allowed single-family homes, and they said, look, we're going to now zone it for duplexes and triplexes in that same spot where only single-family was. And all of a sudden, the city lit up. And he explained it, you know, all the lights just showed up at night, and the city lit up. And he said, we need to put more emphasis on duplexes, not single families, more emphasis on triplexes, and more emphasis on up to four units, and then six units. And it may sound like I'm, you know, trying to tout my view about six units and less, but 99% of this entire day till 12:30, 1 o'clock, was about two to six units. And he says, that's how you solve the problem. Manchester and the cities, they did talk about conversion, getting much more units in there. He talked about throughout this, the light touch. It's not a heavy touch, but they kept stressing, it's a light touch for towns. And with a light touch, you can, you can bring back all the housing, you can gain as much housing as you need, and the prices will drop. And that's
All right.
The gist of it.
Thank you. Do you know if it's been recorded?
I do not believe so, but a lot of the slides were online, and it was, they were really small and hard to see to follow them, and I guess that's something they're going to fix for next year.
I was hoping
I don't think the guy knew how to design slides, because a lot of them were unreadable.
Oh, Judy, there you are! I didn't know you were
I just joined.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. It was nice to see you there, by the way.
I know. It was fun.
I was hoping to make it, but I've been like running in circles all week trying to do other things. So thank you for the report, though, Mike.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right. So it looks like we're up to talking about housing issues, and since we are, and talking about community engagement, and then some of the regulatory changes as well, I would like to invite any HOP members out there to sit at the table if you'd like. We've got some empty seats here, if you want to join the discussion. I think we've got a quorum, in fact. Let's see, we've got myself, Sue, Mike, Patty, Matt, the whole first half of the list. And then Bruce and Brian, and Brian are not present this evening, so we do have a quorum, in fact. So I'll call us to order, and so I guess we'll start by speaking a little bit about community engagement. And I guess the two big things to talk about there would be the meeting in a box that the Housing Committee is launching, and this month, and trying to get them done in a hurry at this point, so we can get some of that feedback before this is all wrapped up. And we are hoping to have another larger community meeting. And thinking about the timeline, what, we were thinking about different dates, and I was realizing, looking at the timeline, that come December, we're going to be having public hearings, which means our last meeting before the public hearings, when we really have to get things wrapped up, is our work session in November, which means that any public engagement meeting we have should be before then. So we were hoping to run it by everyone on the Planning Board and Committee to think about the 26th, I guess it is, which would be a Thursday night, like we often have Planning Board meetings, of October, for a public engagement community meeting. Just this way, by our next work session the next week, that that will be done, and we'll have that feedback, and then we can make any decisions we want to make going into our December public hearings.
So, John, I don't know if you saw my earlier email, but the 26th is not going to work for us. We can do the 25th.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. I've been running in circles all day.
I understand that. It's not criticism. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. Okay.
We can do the 25th. It's fine.
So the 25th will be a Wednesday evening?
Yes. So Will can't make it, because he's in another community, I believe, Will, but Alexis and I could be in Plymouth that night.
I'm free on the 25th evening. We have a couple of members not here this evening, but those of us who are here for a quorum can make the decision. How will the 25th work?
Should be good.
25th works for me.
Okay.
Is that October 25th?
October 25th, the Wednesday evening.
I might be here.
Okay. Now, you can always corral Jack to come.
Yeah. So is this in addition to our two Planning Board meetings?
It is, because we have a business meeting, which Joseph, I believe, we do have business for our business meeting?
Yeah, the October business meeting is, it's got, it's got a couple of larger applications. I mean, you could have discussions added, too, for sure, but it
Probably wouldn't be good to combine with the community meeting.
Okay.
And, and we still want to have our work session, which is open to the public, of course, but is not primarily for public engagement, where we want to kind of hash everything out to be ready for our public hearings in December. So it's a lot coming pretty quickly. And I think this is kind of the way it has to be to make this all work out, and have that last kind of burst of community engagement. Yeah?
I just kind of want to throw one more thing in here that I forgot to tell you with the regard to the CIP Committee.
Yes.
On November 2nd, we would like to bring the proposal to the Planning Board.
Okay.
And then on 11/16, we're hoping to do the public hearing.
Okay.
And we're just kind of hoping we can pull everything off prior to that. We kind of have to.
Yeah.
Just to throw those two dates out there, just those two things for those two dates.
So both November meetings and
Right.
Discussion of CIP.
On the 2nd.
Okay.
And that's correct. Is that right, Joseph?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's my understanding, too, that, and then first of the Planning Board would have a public hearing, and then decide to adopt it at that, at that point.
At this, on the 16th. Okay, which is actually a business meeting, right?
Which, which, I think it's fine. I can't imagine this is, well, it could be a long runout discussion, but you never know.
Okay. I just wanted to do that. Sorry to interrupt.
No. So it'll be a busy month, and I think we're having some important discussions, and I think it's worth it.
Well, I will then look at venues. I think the Bobcat Cafe seemed to work well last time.
Yeah, it did.
I don't know if anybody has other thoughts, but I can try and get that as a, as a first priority, unless anybody has another opinion of somewhere that might work better, and then maybe elementary school as a backup.
Mm-hmm.
Both of those seem to be fine, although I know that people tend to be more comfortable with the seating options in the Bobcat Cafe at the high school, just because they work with the short, really short chairs.
Okay.
I thought it worked good at the Bobcat Cafe. Yeah.
All right. Let's, let's plan for that, then. Does anyone have anything else to add about specifics for our, I know we've been talking a lot in our HOP meetings about the meetings in a box and all that. Judy, Alexis, anyone, anything we want to add at this meeting about that, or should we jump right into zoning amendments?
The only thing I wanted to say is that I did address the math concerns, and I sent them over to Joseph. So however we handle printing, they should be good to go, because I believe the plan, Joseph, is for people to come to the next Housing Committee meeting with a sense of, you know, when, who they're going to meet with, and be able to inform that.
Yep.
And I think we wanted to have a definition sheet to go with all that stuff, to define what all the zones are. And also that, that bubble graph that you guys made, it, that really helped a lot of people, and so we kind of would like that included in it as well, to show people that we talk with.
Okay.
Okay. Do you know what I'm talking about?
The Venn diagram.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
That, I think that was good.
Okay. So we can have those ready for Tuesday for the committee to see and make sure there's nothing leaving out, but I guess if you, so it's just a list of definitions and that graph.
And the definitions of the, I think we have the, like workforce, workforce housing definition, there was a bunch of definitions that you gave us in the beginning.
We have a handout for those on the website.
And I think we should have that with us to go in the packet that you provided for us already, to take to the meetings, the ones that we go to the houses to visit. I have a few scheduled already.
I'm going to team up with Sue.
Okay.
So we have two people.
The thought that I had on that is the Phase 1 report does include the definitions and the bubbles, so we could make sure everybody has a printed copy of that Phase 1 report. That might be a good way to have other things, if you need to reference them, too.
Okay, that'll be good. And just the zoning definitions. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So fantastic. So in terms of zoning amendments and such, so we have a series of definitions and use tables and dimensional tables that reflect pretty closely the sorts of things, perhaps with a couple of amendments, that we've been discussing in previous couple of months, I guess, at this point. And so we have that to look at. And then we also asked for examples of inclusionary zoning ordinances, and we have two of those from Londonderry and, where was the other one?
Dover, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes. And then we have the open space code as well, from Dover, I think it was, right?
I think Dover's open space and inclusionary was more thorough.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah. And Londonderry.
London, right, yeah.
So perhaps we should start with the drafts of the amendments that we have been talking about? I don't know if you guys want to introduce them at all? I think they reflect a lot of the discussions we've had.
I think we should. Alexis, do you think we should just bring the slides up, or do you want me to screen share the word document? You're on mute.
I think the slides would be useful for the, the dimensional tables, just because it focuses really on those change. I didn't make slides for, like, the definitions that would be added. I just, I didn't think to do that. So like for attached single-family, we might want to pull those, if you could screen share with that.
Why don't I do that first? Is that right? So I will screen share this document.
Do you record the zooms, so that we can see that?
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will blow this up, so people can actually see it, although hopefully you all have it. Let me see. I'm challenged here this evening, and it's not fun. Oh, here we go. Oh, was that, we're going to do that, here we go. Yay. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Not every word, but I have the thing in front of me, so I'm good.
Okay. So one of the things that we had talked about was providing for a building form that is not specifically called out in your current zoning. I had alluded to this at the last meeting I was at with the Housing Committee, to have a, you know, a concept, in addition to multifamily, to have this concept of the attached single-family dwelling, which, you know, some people call it a common wall house, some people would call it a townhouse. It really depends on how the common wall is configured. But by providing for this in the bylaw and separating it from ordinance, rather, excuse me, separating it from multifamily, it then allows you to create some specific rules around attached single-family that would be different from, from multifamily. So we have provided a recommended definition, which in the amendment process would go into your existing list of dwelling types, and it would simply be inserted in alphabetical order. The other thing that's in here, which may not seem like a big deal, but it actually is technically more accurate, is to use the phrase multifamily rather than multiple unit. Multiple-unit developments could be all single-family, multiple units on a single lot. So if you want to talk about structures with six units in them, it's actually better to refer to it as multifamily. So we're just suggesting that you kind of update that definition, or the term, rather, and throughout the ordinance where multi-unit, multiple unit exists, to simply replace it with multifamily. So we then looked at the table of uses, the tables of uses, rather, and suggested some changes to it. And all of these, at some point or another, have been, whoops, sorry, have been discussed at some point, with the Housing Committee at least, and I think to some extent even with the Planning Board. So one of, pardon me?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit shows in this chart as permitted. We're recommending a corresponding change in the accessory dwelling unit section of the ordinance to make it clear that it's not a conditional use permit. Open space residential development would be a permitted option in several districts. The, I'm just looking for what the real changes are here. The multifamily dwelling, the last Housing Committee I was at, Committee meeting I was at, I had suggested, if people are really that committed to not allowing bigger structures, then just stick with the six-unit limit you have now. I mean, it's not necessarily something we recommend, but I'm trying to hear where you guys are coming from. So the only real change here would be to recognize it as a permitted use in the district that is so-called identified for multifamily dwellings, which is MFR. So it would not be a special exception, because it doesn't need to be in a district that's designated for multifamily development. Then the, the next change down, following from that, would be inserting attached single-family dwelling, not exceeding four units, which would be permitted both in the single-family district, because these are single-family dwellings, as well as in the multifamily district. And then two-family dwellings, I think, are already in here as they currently exist in your ordinance.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, single-family dwelling attached is by special exception in the Ag. And I was just wondering if we're thinking about overlays or water sewer exceptions, where it might be permitted in certain parts of what is currently the Ag Zone?
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's sewer, it's fine. I also think, you know, which we hadn't gotten to, and you're kind of right to call us out on it, me, anyway, because I'm ultimately the one you blame if something doesn't get done. But, I mean, we had talked a bit about perhaps thinking about an overlay along Fairgrounds Road as an example of a place that might be appropriate in the Ag Zone, for thinking about encouraging some additional housing and something that's a little more dense. So I certainly think in the Ag, in the Ag Zone proper, I don't know that you want to be promoting a lot of density, but in areas where it makes sense, in areas where there's sewer, I think it would be fine. And so, yes, an overlay would make sense. And I'd be happy to draft that. I just would like to make sure we've got direction on this stuff before, before we go that route, but I think an overlay along that corridor would be fine.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Judy.
Yeah, and would be permitted use. I think that's fine. So kind of keeping going here, by the way, I don't know in your legislative framework, how you actually write your zoning changes into your town meeting documents, but I gave you the format that I'm familiar with, so this is kind of the way they're typically written. I'm happy to adapt this in whatever way you need us to.
Okay.
So the next changes were in the institutional uses, where there's this, yeah, I think we've talked about this before, that there's kind of some confusion in the, in the way this is currently written. And so we were just trying to suggest perhaps modifying it, so that if someone is looking to do less than 100% of the requirement, then the special exception would apply. But if they're proposing to do less than 125%, it doesn't make any sense to require somebody to get a special permit, because they would still be complying with the parking requirements. So over 100, or under 100% or more than 125% would be the special So over 100, under 100% or more than 125% would be the special exception standard.
And can I just point out the version that the committee received had the, for the 100% at the very end for, what are those two? It was, we had special exception, because that was what the current zoning has for under 125%, and we changed it to under 100, but we, so Judy, we were talking today after meeting with Joseph, and so I think we maybe tentatively are thinking whether it should be just permitted or special exception or.
Yeah, I think if you're going to exempt or waive a requirement, under New Hampshire law, they have to do it as a special exception, I believe. I'm happy to take input on that, but that's my understanding, because otherwise you're creating a discretion, you're creating a right at the discretion of the board.
Certainly makes it legally neater.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we talking right now the second to the last off-site parking facility?
Uh, yes. Uh, no. It's these two, can you see where my cursor has just highlighted this?
Yes, so, I'm not, I don't, is anybody else, is anybody else clear on that? Because I'm not clear on.
Currently, it's like, if it's above 125, it's below, if it's below 125, you always, you always need a special exception, and it's a little bit weird the way it's currently written.
125% of what?
Of the parking requirement.
For a specific building.
For a specific use. If someone's looking, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, I, so let's say a specific use says you need six spots.
Yep.
I'm not sure the, I guess I'm just trying to understand why the change, why it's necessary, just in my head.
So first of all, I'll tell you, one of the things that's unusual about your zoning is that typically parking requirements are not addressed at all in dimensional tables or use tables, they're just not handled this way. So the fact that it's here is kind of, we're trying to work within the framework you have, but Mike, I think the concept is if someone's going to comply with the parking by providing 100% of the requirement, they shouldn't need a special exception.
And they do currently.
The way your zoning's written right now, they do.
Because currently it says less than 125%, you need a special exception in most districts, and so again, that's saying if you're, if you're complying with the parking requirement, you still need a special exception.
Yeah, and that's crazy. Someone's meeting the parking requirement, they shouldn't need a special exception. Why is it there? Why are these there?
It's a conflict, it really is a conflict between this section, in our current zoning, between this section and the parking tables, because the parking tables will tell you you need six spaces for use, and then this piece tells you, you can't have less than 125% of six, more than 125% of six, or 125% of six, so it's just, it's a conflict.
So we're just cleaning it up at this point?
Yes, Mike, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Julie and Joseph.
We have a question from the public, would you like to?
Having been on the parking committee.
One of the confusing part is we have in our ordinance, not less than 125% of the minimum, which is a single family dwelling, which is two units, which means you have to build two and a half parking spaces. And I will tell you, there have been at least three court cases that have rendered that ordinance no effective law, and you have to either have it 100%, so if you come to the board saying you have a single family house, and you want less than a minimum, which is two, you need to seek the zoning board. If you want more than two, you seek, but you can't have, it's called a technical infeasibility, when you produce a requirement of someone to do something where the numbers are not logical for the action taken, it's called a technical infeasibility in all the codes and standard systems, and that is the basic one that we have right now.
And we're trying to address that with this.
Yeah, so it just needs to be 100% of the minimum whole numbers of whatever use is required.
This is a little bit different, because it wouldn't include the two-space part, but I think that's being addressed elsewhere as well in fractional numbers. This is more for facilities, but yeah, we are trying to address some of those issues.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if the Planning Board, you know, accepts the recommendation as it's laid out here, I would further recommend that we kept this out of the table of uses and relocate requirements like this to the parking section, it's just the logical place for it to go.
I would not be opposed to such a.
Is that, can we do that? Yeah, you could do that. I mean, we, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Would that be complicated for you to do as part of this housing study, or?
Oh, no, 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 it's fine. I was just trying to work within what you've got, but.
No, so I think all of us, it sounds like we're okay with moving it, yeah? Okay.
Okay. All right. Moving along here. So now we go to.
Yeah, do you want me to put up the slides, Judy?
Yeah, maybe you should, I mean, I just, Alexis has kind of tried to convert this into sort of redline version in slides. I actually hate redline in zoning because it creates errors, but for purposes of trying to be clear, I think it's fine to bring it up in the slides, so why don't I stop sharing, so you can share.
So just, just an FYI for everybody, this is just taking, trying to kind of break down the tables that were in your packet, and look at it, you know, by kind of section of the table. So Judy, I'll let you take it away.
Thanks.
The first is the frontage.
I can't see it, Alexis.
Oh, you can't see?
I don't think you're sharing, yeah, we're not.
Oh, sorry. I was.
All right.
Now am I sharing?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just, there we go.
Okay. So I think our, looking at the entirety of what we're suggesting with these dimensional regulations, it's to try to restore a development pattern that has historical roots in Plymouth, and remove some of the factors in your existing dimensional tables that create non-conformity where it's not necessary. I think another piece of this, which I admit, I'll just concede, is not in the version I sent you, but is something we strongly recommend, is to try to get your lot regulations as a whole more standardized. So I'll get to what I'm talking about with the area tables in a minute, but for purposes of this, again, to encourage a restoration of a pattern that was already there, and also to remove some non-conformity, is to reduce the frontage requirement on lots in single family and multifamily district where, where you've got adequate, where you've got public or private sewer system, and allow those lots to be smaller, and then leave the, with the other frontage requirements, we did not touch, but in those situations where there's existing sewer, you know, 100 feet is actually a lot of frontage, and it doesn't really serve any, any purpose. I mean, if you think about what frontage is really about, it's about providing adequate access to a lot, that's ultimately what frontage does, so you just don't need that much, you don't need 100 feet in an area that's got sewer, you could allow that to be a more compact zone, those two. Why don't you go on to the next one, Alexis? So Will had talked about this, and, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with him, that there's a standard in zoning where if you've got an area that's kind of evolved over time, and a lot of the existing homes or structures are set back a certain way, that when you make the setback requirement deeper, you end up with a very uneven urban pattern, and by urban, I don't mean city, I mean, I mean a developed pattern. So typically in zoning, what we say is, well, here's what we would aim for, it might be 15 feet, which is more, which is closer to, I think, what you have in a lot of those older lots, but if someone's going to build a new house, take something down, rebuild or whatever, then the frontage requirement would not be so deep, it would be either 15 feet or the average front setback of the structures around it. And that's a very standard way in zoning of trying to restore kind of a regular pattern in a, in an established, developed village center neighborhood. So we're, pardon me?
Go ahead, if you're still talking.
So it's just simply a position of, here's the standard, it's 15 feet, or the average, or the average of the frontage of the, of those surrounding lots, whichever is less, but certainly no less than five feet. So it's, it's a way to try to restore again, and protect, and preserve, and promote an established development pattern.
So I have a question?
Yeah, sure.
And I'm not sure it really has that much, but no less than five feet in SFR and no less than 10 feet in MFR, I mean, in some ways they feel very similar, the buildings are bigger in MFR, but in terms of like frontages and setbacks, they feel kind of similar, what, what's the difference there?
Well, multifamily building is just bigger, I mean, you probably do want it set back a little bit more. That would not be uncommon.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are pretty close to already, some of these large buildings, I just, yeah. I was also wondering, and if, I guess, because I think it applies to all zones, maybe it doesn't matter, and maybe it should stay, and we wrote a couple of years ago a key to the ordinance that talks about demolished or burned down houses and building on the same footprint within a certain timeframe, and I think this almost makes it like not necessary, at least for the residential zones, but I guess it still might be useful, because it's relatively applicable to anywhere, right?
It is right now, yeah, you can rebuild on the existing foundation.
So it's probably worth leaving it in there, because it applies everywhere. I think so.
It seems, seems like it wouldn't conflict with this.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if it was redundant at this point, but I guess it's not, because it applies everywhere.
You know, in some zoning, a building burns down, and you can either rebuild exactly on the footprint that was there, or an equivalent footprint in terms of area, if the goal of the project is to increase conformity. So if you have an existing footprint that doesn't conform for reasons other than a front setback, it may make more sense to say, you can rebuild within that, the square feet of that building that's come down, you can't exceed that, but if you're going to propose a building that actually would increase conformity, you probably wouldn't want to discourage that.
Yeah.
That's probably beyond what we can do right now, but it's something I want you to think about, because sometimes it makes more sense to let someone rebuild in a way that's going to increase conformity, rather than just saying, well, you can only have a building where it already was, and maybe that wasn't the best place for it, but, you know.
I think what we have written gives the option, it doesn't mandate that you use an existing, yeah.
Right, okay.
Mike, yeah?
One thing that I've always been concerned about is South Main Street, that the road was wide enough back in the day, when cars were small and horse and buggies, and the deeds for a lot of those properties are, I believe, zero setbacks on the front, they can build right up to the sidewalk, I believe, and I'm not positive. And it would be really interesting to see that road widened out, and I think you've got five feet, the side of the street proposed, 15 feet in the Village Commercial for the front, but if someone, if it burns down, it's almost like, could they get it on the backside so they don't lose anything? Is there anything that could be done with that, Judy, so that it kind of is forcing a better path for everybody to shop on South Main?
Wait, what would be a better path, to have less or more setback?
I think like when, when the last, hm? When the last patio, extra seating for the Panther Pub, built out towards the sidewalk, I think, I wasn't on the Planning Board at the time, and I kind of always thought, jeez, if anything, that would have been the opportunity for the town to say, look, we get, you want some more space, we realize everybody's deed is a little different, and yours comes up right to the sidewalk, and you're not taking it every, but you're going pretty close to it, but let's work with you, see if we can get you space on the other end, do whatever the town can do, and we didn't do that in that case, and I, I kind of felt like something, everything was done above board in the right way, but I just kind of wished there was an incentive to not come right up to the sidewalk there.
So last year, the Planning Board made the opposite decision and reduced front setbacks.
I'm just thinking for the width of the road and parking along the road, that's.
You can never widen that road, right?
To get parking, more parking along that road, that's one of the benefits of having smaller setbacks, that you can't park on the property anymore.
No, not on the property, but on the road, if we could.
And then, which, which means that all those long curb cuts with, with new development wouldn't be there anymore, because people wouldn't be parking in front of the buildings, instead they'd be parking on the road, where those curb cuts would now be curbs.
And that's another way to handle it, and I, I wouldn't be opposed to it, it's just, I've seen so many car sign, view mirrors get taken off.
But I think we're getting a little, I think we're on a little bit of a sidetrack from some of what we're talking about here for housing.
But it sounds like we're on it, and we're working towards a solution.
Well, we are thinking about those issues more broadly on this board, yes.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna toss it back.
Mike, I want to think about that more.
Okay.
I don't have a good answer for you tonight.
It's just a real problem, it's a real problem with South Main Street that it doesn't, it's not a problem with North Main Street, or around the Common, because we only have one direction on the Common.
Yep.
But it's both ways, and there were ways to solve it, at least where the bottleneck was, and it was too expensive to spend the extra 40 or 50 grand to build a tiny retaining wall where the old Plymouth Inn was, and I kept pushing it, but my friends on the, wherever. Who drives that road the most in this room? I don't know.
I stay away from it the most.
Yeah, I wish I could avoid it like that.
I mean, I personally think the large setbacks on Main, currently on South Main, are part of the problem, and it leads to these strip developments with big parking lots in front of them, which really aren't very amenable to parking on the street, because large curb cuts, they're not amenable to walking, it doesn't feel safe to walk there.
And so I agree with that building, parking in front of the building, I have no problem with that, to try and discourage that, I get that, but just that the road is so narrow, and, but if we're trying to eliminate the parking on the road, then.
I don't know if we're doing that, but yeah, but that's a bigger discussion, and.
Well, and you probably missed the window because of all the work that's being done.
Just thinking if there's a fire.
There was also a streetscaping opportunity, which I guess was out of budget. Anyway, another issue, another night.
Could you clarify, Judy, that though, at this point, though, you haven't put anything in here for Village Commercial, right?
No, we've just been focusing on these two districts.
Okay.
Alexis, can we go on to the next slide?
Well, this has the new section about the minimum setback for uncovered parking spaces and garages of less than 12 feet, and, so that, that is new. I didn't redline anything because it wasn't there before.
It sounded like there was some pretty broad agreement on that when we talked about this.
Yeah, I think so.
I think one point Joseph brought up that, I don't know if you want to discuss, is whether garages should be kept as garages or accessory uses, because, Joseph, did you say there's no other place where garages are talked about in a distinct manner, or?
Yeah, just to clarify, right now, the ordinance doesn't differentiate between a garage or a shed or any other type of accessory structure, so if we were to regulate garages differently, we would just need to clarify, because we have other provisions that would apply to how setbacks relate to accessory structures, and if this was a carve-out for garages specifically, I think we would just have to make sure that we were careful that the, it would work with the other section, unless it were to say, all accessory structures less than 12 feet, or garages cut their own definition.
You know, I mean, certainly, I mean, I haven't thought this fully through, but certainly the SFR and MFR, to allow sheds within the same smaller setback, I don't see as a problem, otherwise they go in the middle of your yard, the size of the, the pieces of land there.
Is it really capturing garages at 12 feet height maximum? Does it really capture garages at all?
You mean, you think of a garage as bigger than that?
Like, that's 12 feet to a peak, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess it includes all the way up to the peak, yeah, 12 feet.
Is it the peak or the midpoint?
I mean, I, I, I think most garages will fit within that, unless you're building a multi-story garage, or you could fill a garage in a small loft above that in 12 feet, I think. I mean, it's tight, I guess, or 15 feet, I should say.
Yeah, 15 feet is, you know, bare minimum.
No, it's 12 feet height, yeah, 12 feet height.
I was just thinking for, I, I think it.
Double my height.
Excludes garages, but I don't think that's inclusionary, I know it says garages, but like, really, we'd be working. but like, really, we'd be working with, um, uncovered parking spaces or sheds. I really don't think it encompasses many garages.
Well, I mean, you guys have worked a lot with this. It does, how does 12 feet work for an average garage?
Um, it actually really does not work well.
So should it be larger?
Well, I'm not sure I would treat uncovered parking spaces and garages in the same framework anyway. But I would say if you're going to have a height, if you're going to refer to garages of less than a certain height, I think you need to say at least 15. Yeah. Well, and Alexis, I'm just thinking through this now, so.
Yep, yep.
But yeah, it really is, 15 is probably better.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's mull that over a little bit more internally as a team.
And we do have like 15 foot garages within that setback currently. So it meets current character of the neighborhood, certainly.
Yeah.
Currently, accessory structures are typically subject to whatever the primary setbacks for the regular structure are, unless they are allowed within the setback by special exception. So that's, that's currently for all structures regardless of...
And the, like I said, in the SFR and MFR, I could see accessory structures, like a shed going within five feet as well, personally.
Right. And I think really one of the reasons we had a height discussion...
Was about having an ADU.
So normally put an ADU on a garage that was five feet next to...
Exactly. See, you don't have a dwelling like five feet next to your neighbor.
Right, okay, yeah, that's right.
And we were concerned about that, which made sense.
You know, the, the thing about the side setback is if you're accommodating parking, if you're trying to get parking out of way from the sort of front of buildings and having it to the side, it's not just a setback. You need to be measuring. It's really more about what that buffer should be between the driveway and the lot line. There's a design consideration in addition to a setback. Are you following me?
Are we talking about landscaping, or are we talking of like?
Yeah, I mean, landscape buffer or fencing or something. I mean, otherwise, I mean, I, that's just typically how, I'm just speaking for myself, how I have written regulations like this. And again, I don't think it should be in this section, but...
Thinking about the current character of the area, I mean, I wouldn't mind some like vegetative screening.
Yeah.
There aren't a lot, there aren't a lot of fences around.
Yeah.
Looking at that neighborhood, I really like the lack of fences.
Yeah, I, I do too. I'm just saying that there's some treatment of that buffer. So that it actually is a buffer.
Open to one another.
Regarding the buffer and kind of the separation of trees and stuff you were just talking about, John, not to jump the horse a little bit, but in a second, we're going to talk about there were some specifications that were tied to when this was a special exception that we're proposing, making just as a requirement, you know, if you want the parking within five feet, you're going to have to provide some additional forms of buffering in the form of some shrubs or something along those lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
At one point, we talked about fencing, and I believe the fencing setback was...
Oh, not this again.
Yeah, I, I would much prefer to not talk about fences. I think they cut people off and it's not necessary. But I do think the concept of buffer is, is a nice one. It's respectful of neighbors and so forth, so.
Well, we do have you on speaker here. What is your experience with other towns? Is, are, are they making you put the fence on the property line or offstand from the property line on your own property?
Can I just address this? I, I don't want to get into a side conversation about fences, which I know gets contentious, as we've seen in the past. Our current ordinance says you can have a shared fence on the property line, or you can have a fence, I think it's at least one foot from the property line, if it's not a shared fence. But you're still allowed a shared fence on the property line.
Thank you for the question. I forgot.
Otherwise, it is one foot off, which we were talking about people getting stuck between there and like dying in between the fences or something. I don't know. Getting attacked by dogs in between the fences.
That's sort of the form code.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's move along.
Yeah, if we could, that would be great.
Okay, um, okay. So this is a little confusing because your previous table separated one in, you know, single family and two-family from multifamily. So Judy?
So I've tried to standardize this table, the way it's usually done, so that, because I think it's clearer. But I will just say this too. You guys would be well advised to consider shifting away from the true acre as your metric to a builder's acre, which is 40,000 square feet. And I say that only because when you're dealing with the 40,000 square foot lot or increments smaller than that, you, you just, you just create a possibility for more regular lots, which in a downtown, you know, neighborhood area is really kind of what you want. But nonetheless, because you, you currently work in terms of true acres, we've tried to kind of live with that to the extent that we can, so.
I mean, I would be fine with a, I would be fine with rounding the numbers and having the builder's acre rather than the true acre. It's fine with me.
I would be fine with that.
Oh, my God, really? Oh, my God, we're gonna fix it then. Love to do it. Okay. But let me, let me get back to this table. So, you know, right now, you can see in the red line strikeout that, that's in this chart, what you have now. And what we're saying, again, to get at the issue of, of allowing an increase in supply, especially in areas where you have, you know, historically established development pattern, is to drop the minimum lot size in the single family and multifamily districts, and CI. So in areas where there's either public or private sewer. And then, for each additional unit over one, which is typically the way this is done, if you're going to require additional land, you say what that metric is. So, in a single family district, if you were going to have, say, you know, two single family homes on a single lot detached or, or two or three attached, um, single family homes, each time you add another unit over one, you're adding 7,500 square feet. So for a lot with roughly 25,000 square feet, you might have three dwelling units. Are you following?
Can I ask you about that?
Yep.
I'm thinking like, if you put like two attached single families...
Yep.
Down, do we really need 1,700, 5, 7, 17,500? I mean, it's, it seems big to me. I don't know.
I would agree.
Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
I'd say 5,000 extra, or less.
Five? I mean, I, I don't know. Is there a reason, is there a reason not to go lower?
No. Other than, I'm trying to respond to what I feel sometimes is a bit of a mix. I'm trying to find a middle ground here. I think in these areas where you have sewer close to the center of town, um, you know, you should definitely allow those, the lot area, the land area in addition for, you know, one or for more than one unit. I would drop it down considerably. I haven't had the sense that the town was ready to go that far. So this is part of why we're having this discussion, because if you provide that dense, that direction, then you'll see a different chart.
I, I'd be curious what a public hearing would read, or maybe our engagement meeting in later this month.
Yep.
I think if everybody agrees with it, they're gonna let us know whether they like it or not, and then we go from there.
They will let us know. I mean, that number can almost become math.
And this is a new development. For the most part, we're talking about, it's not existing development. It gets the price point lower.
And none of this includes ADUs. ADUs can still go.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you, you can, um, I, I mean, I do think it's about, it's a question of overall supply, but I also think, you know, we're looking at the master plan, we're looking at the established development, the historical development pattern of the town. And as planners, we would say, if you're going to, to encourage more supply, focus first in the areas where you have adequate infrastructure. And so that's why you're seeing differences in the way these districts are being proposed for change in regulations. It really has to do with what is the quality and condition and adequacy of the existing infrastructure to support development. And we can have a very interesting philosophical discussion about this, but I just want you to know, as planners, that's where we're coming from. So, so I, we'd be thrilled to drop the additional land area per unit in these cases. I'm just telling you why I err on the conservative side. And frankly, what we're proposing is still more than, you know, it's a more dense, it's more density than you currently allow. So let me just keep going if I could. I would just say, if we're allowed to go with builder's acre, what you're going to see in the ag zone is 40, 40,000 square feet, and in CI, it's going to be 20,000 square feet. I mean, and in HC, I mean, that's what, that's what you're going to see, is a more unified, is an easier set of numbers from a development point of view to, to work with. When you get into situations where people are, are having to accommodate onsite wastewater through a septic system, then I think the conversation does change. Because you still have environmental conditions that you have to consider. So right now, you have an acre requirement in those areas, in all of these zones. And so that's why we're just showing 43,560 square feet, because we're trying to get everything into a common metric. So you don't have people that's got acres and then square feet. It should all be in one, one system.
Can I just ask one question? Since you're mentioning like environmental concerns and all that.
Yep.
By using a builder's acre, we're not going to be having two different numbers with compliance with state regulations about septic and stuff, are we?
No.
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're not going to start.
We, we had three lots that were just about one acre. In part, most of those, or a good portion of those lots were wet and weren't usable in state standards, right?
Okay.
So...
So just, just checking in, yeah.
It's very reasonable. And if it doesn't fit, the state won't approve it.
Yeah. I just wanted to just check in on that.
Yeah. And I have a, I do have a, I do have a point slash, but no, I did want to bring up with, you did mention earlier, having multiple, say, two single family homes on the same lot.
Right.
Under current zoning, that multiple residential buildings on the same lot requires a special exception, but I didn't see a proposal to change that in here. Would you recommend keeping that as is, or, or changing that somehow?
Oh, no, I would make it permitted. We just need to make sure there's a, a standard for the minimum separation between buildings.
Well, I like that.
Yep. So we can certainly add that. I think that's fine. It's actually, it's actually sometimes a very nice design in a, in a more urban neighborhood. Anyway, for purposes of this chart, we did not suggest kind of changing in a fundamental way, the, the basic, basic lot in those unsued areas. And then, again, assuming one, one unit. So if you wanted to have more units, then you would be adding a certain amount of land to accommodate those additional units. So that's kind of the framework that we were anticipating. And I think it's important to kind of read this in conjunction with the use regulations, so that you kind of can think about, well, we're saying a use is permitted in X zone, and now we're saying at this density. So when you line all those things up, you're saying, this is really the encouraged develop, I can't talk tonight, the encouraged development pattern in this district.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, the only thing I want to point out, because you guys have a version of this that was sent to you last night, I believe.
Yeah.
We had a, an error in this line with the onsite septic disposal system. So if you have your copy, you just might want to make a note of that. We had that half acre. So just, just be aware.
She's being polite. I'm the one who made the mistake. She's just being polite. So anyway, um, so this is kind of the concept for this table. Let's keep going if we could, Alexis, just to at least get all this out. Was that it, actually?
For, in terms of the slides, I just did the dimensional. The other things are in the blah, blah, blah.
Oh, I should probably just bring that up again then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, hold on. Hold on. Shoot. Where'd you go?
I can also share, Judy.
Yeah, maybe you better, because I'm now having a conniption fit with this laptop.
Sure, just the half.
I'm in Du Haven at a hotel, guys, and I'm not doing very well tonight. I'm at a conference, so excuse me while I fumble here.
All right, yep, just give me one sec. Um, oops. Yes, I will be joining Judy later. I said, I will be joining you later. Okay.
You've got it.
Yes. Let me just make it a little bigger for people.
Yeah.
Oh, the, uh, Judy, you did have a footnote also about, and I, I think you were saying, talked about this earlier, but again, those areas in the ag zone, which, John, you brought up, that's when overlay could...
Oh, I definitely think, I definitely think that's appropriate. You know, I just didn't get that far, but I'm telling you, if you tell us to do that tonight, we'll have it, we'll, we'll have something ready to present at that October 25th meeting.
Let's do it.
Because I think it's fine. So then there are the, the off-street parking regulation, Section 411, which by the way, this is where I think some of that stuff that's in the dimensional tables, or use tables, rather, should go here. But you have a reference to the term duplex, but actually two-family is what's defined in the ordinance, so you should just change that term. So, location of off-street parking facilities. Now, this is probably going to drive everybody insane, but I, I think if what you want to do is not have parking in front of buildings in, in your more established areas of town, like front yards covered with, with cars, you need to kind of say you can't do that. And, and so it's not just kind of what a minimum setback would be. It's like you can't have, you can't have cars strewn over the front yard of a home, or a building, or a commercial building. So it has to be setback from the building line. And what, what, using the building line as your standard, is that between the building line and the street, you're not going to have front yard parking. So it really forces parking to either go to the side or to, or the rear of, of a building. A minimum setback alone doesn't do that. It's a maximum setback. So thinking about, I want you to think about this as if what you're trying to get to is a place where you don't have front yard parking. You actually have to say that in your ordinance. And right now, that's not really clear. So we're just suggesting that you do this. What it does, of course, get to is the point I was trying to make earlier, that if you're now going to say the parking has to go to the side or it has to go to the rear, then you have to think about the treatment of that setback for the benefit of neighbors who, who now will definitely be seeing parking either in a driveway right next to their lot line or in the back. Am I making sense? Whether you agree or not, do you understand my point?
This is the no snout house rule.
Yeah.
No snout house, where you have a garage like in front of your house instead of a door.
Well, although technically, the front building line is established from whatever the most protruding point is on that front building. So that actually isn't going to solve the problem of the snout house. What it does is it stops, it stops parking in front of buildings, between buildings and the street.
So it, it stops the actual like parking space in front of the building. It doesn't stop a garage from protruding way out in front of the house?
Correct.
No parking spaces or facilities shall be located within 15 feet of a public street.
Okay.
Between front building line, between a front building line and the public street. If you're going to allow a garage or something to be located in that space, it should be by special exception.
Okay.
So for my multi-unit buildings, I put streetlights in the parking in the front, because that's the safest spot for people to walk into the building. And that's usually where the front door is facing the street. Not that I'm worried about me, because I'm grandfathered, I'm guessing, but...
I mean, I, I think this is more residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, it is.
And in residential neighborhoods, like, like in Plymouth that are more walkable, it often feels nicer to have a welcoming front door rather than a big like parking garage like in front of, in front of the building.
Yeah.
It just makes for a more welcoming neighborhood. It makes for more eyes in the street, because they're not being blocked by garages and like, say, kids playing out there. You have nice sightlines, all kinds of stuff like that.
It does make for that, but does it restrict housing? You know, if...
That, that's why we're making it easier to put driveways close to the lot line in the side. This, this way, we're not restricting. We're making a provision, another, a new provision for parking that we don't currently have, so you don't have to have the parking right in front of your house.
Right.
Neil, what do you think? Because you... Because you, you plow a lot of these buildings still, don't you?
Yeah.
What would you rather say?
You know, I, I see builders and developers trying to push their limits on setbacks as much as possible. And if you let them park in front of the building, that means they can make the building bigger on the lot.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, if you don't let them park in front of the building, they can't make the building as big and meet the setback requirements.
Well, I think it's also, this is why we pair this recommendation with allowing you to put the building further in front of the lot.
Right.
So, yes, you have to park in the back now, but we've exchanged it, so you get, you know, by, the old by right was thirty feet, so now you're getting fifteen feet to put your building in the front.
Right.
So you have the space to put your parking in the back now, so you're not losing any space on the lot, they're not going to have to build smaller units, it's just moving the parking from, you know, the, the front to the back, so you get kind of nicer, a nicer view on the street, and so it makes it feel more safe and feel like a better place you want to be walking in.
This is part of what makes that neighborhood work right now.
Is what?
Is having parking on the side and the back, is what makes that neighborhood, we took the walking tour through, so welcoming and friendly and having kids out in the street, all of this is facilitated by that pattern of development.
It's just, some of that plows, Neil, you're, you're driving to the back of the building, trying to plow and turn around and get people to move their vehicles, it gets real interesting quick in New Hampshire.
People are already doing.
Well, I don't think, Mike, I don't think that's a New Hampshire issue, sorry. I think sometimes you guys think that like, well, it's New Hampshire, and it's got to be really different because it's New Hampshire, some of this stuff is not. It's about encouraging a form that's more welcoming to people in a, in a traditional neighborhood design. The idea of having to plow on the side or in the back of a building, that, that is not, that is not something that New Hampshire can't deal with. You guys are tired for this.
What are the current side setbacks right now in the single-family, multi-family?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? So I mean, removing five feet from the side does not by any means constitute being able to, like, make up that space of having like, like going from fifteen feet to ten feet.
We're going from fifteen to five.
It says ten right here.
Side and rear setbacks for garages, which includes parking, is five in the table.
What page do you own?
I don't know where you are.
Four, top of page four.
Twenty-two.
Which is about, which is about garages, but it's what we were talking about as well for any kind of parking.
So minimum.
Including the driveway.
Uncovered park, oh, I see what you're saying.
So, what I'm, I'm thinking right now is, we're going to have a few more meetings before all this gets decided. Let's leave this in for now and talk further about it. I want to hear before this meeting is out, and before it gets too late and I'm all groggy, about the inclusionary zoning ordinance and the new ideas for open space. And I don't want to, like, run out of time for those by talking about this particular detail. And I'd like to see this language stay here for now, we can bring it to the community meeting, we can bring it to the next work session in November, and see if we want to bring it to public hearing in December.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem.
Keep workshopin' it.
Okay. That sound good on your end?
Yep.
Okay.
So Alexis, yeah, so, this is simply an amendment to the accessory dwelling unit section, to make it clear that you don't have a conflict between the table of uses and this, this provision, so you're deleting the reference to conditional use permit. And then also taking out that language about workforce housing, because it doesn't meet the workforce housing definition, so it shouldn't be in here.
Yep, and the park, lower in the parking, the one spot.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't skipping over that, I'm just blind right now. Yeah, I mean.
I like that.
Let's just be real. Okay. And then, yeah, so, so we get to this point, and, you know, I mean, I would love to write an inclusionary zoning ordinance for you guys, but I feel like I want some direction. You know, you could have, you could have these, these more, more realistic requirements for development in your various districts that we've tried to outline in this, these tables, but allow for even more housing if the developer is willing to restrict some of it as workforce units. Which is kind of the way in New Hampshire, you have to do it if you want to actually make them stick. Because in New Hampshire, and actually a number of states, you can't require developers to provide affordable housing, but you can encourage it. So if you're encouraging it by allowing more housing than they could otherwise do, then yes, at that point, you can, you can require a restriction on the affordable units. So, in an attempt to try to help the town think about the fair share goals and the workforce housing statute and so forth, you could consider having an inclusionary ordinance that allows more development than what is being provided for as a right, in exchange for some percent, some modest percentage of affordable units. And I think, you know, you guys, if you're going to incur, consider it, should probably make it a modest percentage rather than, of affordable units, because we're not talking about enough density here to really justify anything greater, I think, not without some type of tax relief or something else. So, we tried to give you an example or two of what it looks like, what inclusionary look, I can't talk tonight, inclusionary zoning looks like. And then also the Dover open space one, I think is kind of a nice example of a, of an open space ordinance that really gets it kind of qualitative, open space standards. So we just wanted you to see those examples and get some direction, some sense from you about whether you want to pursue those things or not.
I mean, it sounded at our last meeting like there was some interest in this.
Yeah.
And I, I like some of the provisions in here that mandate that they be, for example, the affordable units be scattered about and not all stuck in a corner somewhere, which I think is a good choice. And, I mean, if it makes it more affordable, you know, they, they can build market rate housing and have a few affordable units subsidized by the market rate housing, from, from the developer's point of view, with a incentive to build more densely or whatever, I mean, makes perfect sense to me. And a lot of people can't afford, and even like middle-income people at this current economy right now can't afford to buy a single-family house.
Yeah, I have.
That's slightly more. Alexis?
Yeah, the only, the way your housing market is, we've heard a lot that people seem amenable to the idea of workforce ownership, that is just not going to happen with a market rate developer. It needs, unless, unless you are, they are including a workforce unit under something like an inclusionary zoning bylaw, how, it's just too expensive to build. And, you know, when we plugged in what someone earning that hundred percent of area median income could afford, in your community, it was around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I think you're not going to build a new home for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I guess what I'm saying is it kind of is critical if you want to see more of that housing type.
I can actually support our workforce.
The other thing I just wanted to point out that I thought was interesting about the differences between Londonderry and Wolfboro, as, as you're looking at them and kind of thinking about what you might want to see in something we draft. So in the Wolfboro one, they had certain percentages based on the affordability level, low-income rental, low to moderate income rental, low-income owner occupied, and, you know, so there's, I, I guess you could maybe think of that as a pro or a con, depending on how you're looking at it. Whereas, so this is, just, just showing real quick, just, I think it's an interesting thing that we would want direction from. So this is how Wolfboro does it, so the, the percentage of, of units based on income level and whether it's rental or ownership. Whereas Londonderry, oh, I'm not going to be able to scroll through and find it, but they just tie it, just to plain old workforce housing law, they just refer you to the statute and say, you know, so it's at sixty percent for rental for a family of three, a hundred percent for a family of four for ownership. So it's a question of, do you want to just refer to that, or do you want to have some other, you know, way of defining income levels within it?
I just want to say, first of all, that my mind was blown when I was reading the Londonderry ordinance, and that, I guess an incentive is, is a minimum lot size of thirty-five thousand square feet for a house. Wow. Anyway, that's a good question, though, and I didn't answer that question.
Yeah, I think the jury is out on these inclusionary ordinances that want tiers of affordability. I like that approach, but that's, I'm speaking with my planner hat on. I actually think if you look at the experience with these, you know, such a percentage for low income, such a percentage for moderate income, the more complicated you make this, the harder it is for somebody to, to meet you even partway.
Good point.
And I, I would just say, you know, where I think, what, what I've heard, just speaking for myself, is a lot of interest in trying to increase affordable homeownership. And if that is the town's goal, then I would just stick with what the statute says and not worry too much about those tiers, because no one's going to build a homeownership unit at thirty percent of AMI, it's not going to happen. That's really getting into rental, and I, I, I would say you should do that, but I'm trying to hear where you guys are, and I, I'm gathering that the greater interest is in homeownership, if that's the case, I would just stick with what the law says and not go beyond it.
So I, I have two comments, questions. What is, one is, like, what would, in your opinion, maybe, like, our carrot look like? What would our incentive be? And B is, I know in the workforce housing law, one of the provisions is that you have to provide for multi-unit construction, which I know we do already.
Yeah.
In other parts of, of town. And multi-unit as defined by the workforce housing law is not four plus, it's, no, it, it's, it's five plus, as opposed to like three plus, which is in our zoning ordinance, I guess. It's, I just don't know how that plays in here or not.
You've got the six.
Maybe that's a whole separate issue.
You've got the six unit per building.
You do have the six unit max anyway, yeah.
Yeah, so I wouldn't.
So anyway, what would our carrot be? What, what would our incentive be? Is it like the four-plex attached? Is it the, something else?
So, yeah, it's, it's more. You, you should offer the developer the option to do single-family duplex, the, the attached single-family or multifamily, let the developer build the product that he or she thinks they can build. And I would say, for every one affordable unit, grant an additional market rate unit. And that may not work, but I would start there.
And you would say additional market rate unit within the same overall area of land that you would have otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, if you can, if you can build ten units as a right, then under the inclusionary ordinance, you would be building twelve, so you would get an affordable unit and additional market rate unit in order to make the affordable unit work for the developer.
Okay.
So that'd be like a five to one ratio on that for every, just for that example, if I'm understanding correctly, if you build ten affordable at your right to build that, you know, within the guidelines that the town has set out, you could then additionally build two more market rates and not within those guidelines?
If you're allowed to build ten at market rate, and you want to put in an extra affordable home, then you also get an extra market rate in that same area, so you have higher density. And that's your bonus for building an affordable house.
With those.
You think of a density bonus.
So, all right, so with, with, with that being like a density bonus, so like, you could then forego, with that bonus unit, if you will, you could forego like the requirements of like square footages, I don't know, like lot size and stuff, and so, okay, all right, thank you, just need that clarification.
Mike?
Right, I mean, you provide for the density, otherwise it's, it's a, it's a, you know, a law that is an unreasonable act, because they can't actually comply. So, you would, you know, the whole inclusionary ordinance is providing that relief, so they can actually do what you're asking them to do. But I think, I, I think that that kind of one-to-one trade-off is probably a good place to start. And my, I, I don't really know that I would ask the developers who are building actively in your town right now, I don't know, I suppose that's a possibility, but a one-for-one is not uncommon. In some very high-end markets, it takes two market units to get a developer to do one, I don't know that you're there.
What would it look like with rental or multifamily building?
It's a totally different game.
So are we just, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, that's not going to work for rental.
So, so, okay, yeah, Mike?
So, when it was initially brought up, I liked the idea of incentives. I'm not sure, and I appreciate Judy's first thought, that it's probably better to have a clean amendments for this cycle. I think that we're going to see quite a bit of the light touch of reducing the lot sizes. I think we're going to get to where we want to be. And I think we're, this town's going to have plenty of housing, it's going to drop the price. I believe, and I think Judy's come up with some great suggestions, I would shy away from.
I don't think the market and building prices right now are going to bear out what you're saying. About dropping the price, about.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Enough to make it affordable to a working family. I, I just don't see the current market doing that.
Teachers, fire, fighters.
Yeah, exactly.
The, the amount of supply that it would take to change housing affordability, which is a different concept from an affordable housing unit. Housing affordability is a market condition. The amount of supply it would take to change that in your town is more than what we're talking about right now. So, let me just, let me just be, be clear about that. But I do think, you know, you have nothing to lose by offering someone the opportunity to do this, because you're freeing up regulations to, again, sort of enable the, the restoration of a form that you've kind of zoned out of existence by creating so much non-conformity. So you, you have nothing to lose by saying, and in addition, folks, we would love to have some workforce housing in our town, and we'll give you an extra market rate unit for an extra, for an affordable unit, some people are going to bite for that and some are not.
But they have the option.
They have the option, so you have nothing to lose.
Right, and I think also, you know.
We're actually being creative for once.
What?
I said, and we're actually being creative for once.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you have nothing to lose doing this.
Exactly.
Except perhaps, you know, the anxiety about what workforce housing is, because you're not losing anything, you're going to gain housing, which is really what you want. And if by God, in the process of gaining that housing, you get some work, some units that actually count as workforce, that's a gain, that's not a loss.
Especially when you're talking about like, single-family ownership, which is what, I, I would say the thing we heard probably the most that is needed is this, you know, the ability to, to, to buy a home for a working-class family, and that, it just cannot happen at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even if you're reducing your lot sizes, like that's not enough to.
And we're not talking about enough, huh?
How, how would the regulation look, what would it look like to a developer?
Like the example you've got.
That you require to have the sales price be at a certain target?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm receptive, I'm listening.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're basing the sale price on what someone at a hundred percent of area median income could afford to pay.
And then what happens if he owns it for ten years? Then there's no restriction after, or after he owns it and buys it initially?
No, there's a deed restriction, it's a deed rider, it goes with the deed.
Okay. Interesting.
I mean, you're certainly not giving enough density here, or, or enough of an affordability requirement.
It's a fact on a deed restriction.
And I, I would just say about the deed restrictions, there, there are organizations that can help with enforcement if your town does not have the staff to do so.
Yeah, you, you guys aren't going to enforce these restrictions, you don't need to. Let somebody who knows how to do that do it.
I'd like to talk about the deed restrictions more in our next, at our next meeting, I know tonight's off the tab, but I would like to learn a little bit more about that.
Sorry, I'm just trying to keep it moving.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep this moving.
My shadow chair.
Yeah, we can definitely talk more about that next week at the House of Committee meeting, and, yeah.
Thanks, Alexis.
Sounds good. And I'm just kind of curious, and, I mean, actually, before, I'm curious about something else. So the open space subdivision that we have here from Dover, I mean, to me, I read, I read it very quickly, I didn't have a lot of time to get through it all, but it looked pretty good to me in terms of giving more guidance as to the quality of the open space and having it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a.
Integrated with the experiences of people living there and all this. Integrated with the experiences of people living there and all this kind of nice stuff, yeah.
Yeah, they, I mean Dover's done some pretty creative stuff with their zoning. So I wanted to look at their code because I had a feeling they would have a pretty decent example.
And I was kind of curious if we do go for an overlay or such, what that might look like in terms of density compared to existing resources? Would it simply be like the SFR or would it be, what would that look like?
Like a Fairgrounds Road overlay?
Yeah, for example.
I mean, you could do a single-family, you know, like the proposed regulations for single-family. If there's sewer there, you could go, you could do more like the regulations for multifamily. I think it's a policy decision.
And I just, you mentioned you might just like draft something if we were good with that.
Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about the overlay is that you're not taking an entire swath of town that, for the most part, has a very low-density development pattern and suggesting that it all should change. But you are allowing investment and housing supply along a corridor where people have said probably would make sense for some development. So I just think, start with something that you already sort of have a comfort level with and see.
And we have water and sewer.
Yeah, right, so.
Far up to that.
The whole road, it just goes.
Oh, really?
What, you're talking about Fairgrounds Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Water and sewer stops at the chainsaw shop. It was extended privately to the last two houses after the chainsaw shop.
Come on, Todd.
Yeah.
Joseph, can you email us the parcel numbers for where the sewer stops? Just because we need to kind of create a map for discussion purposes for that.
And honestly, it kind of.
Pardon me?
It kind of feels like it changes character right around there anyway in terms of being a bit more rural and agricultural.
Certainly does.
Right at that spot.
Yeah, I would say that there is, there also exists shape files for that in GIS. And if you don't have that, we will make sure that we can arrange with Water and Sewer District to get that for you.
Yeah. That's fine. I just, we need to think about how we're going to shell that on a map is all. So, that would be great.
Judy, for the inclusionary zoning, I know we've talked about this. Is that, would that be tied into an overlay or is that just townwide?
The inclusionary has to be, has to be some kind of overlay.
Okay.
I mean, because you can't require it, so we need to be thinking about, almost like an affordable housing overlay.
Yep.
So you might allow that anywhere and just say, "Look, any district where housing is allowed, if somebody wants to do an extra unit and market rate, fine, you can do it, but you've got to give us an affordable unit." I don't think the town has anything to lose, so.
So it's a townwide overlay essential if they wanted to go that.
Well, only where water and sewer are.
Only where water and sewer are.
Yeah, we need to be consistent from a planning point of view.
And water and sewer, not just one or the other?
Well, I think both. I mean, you're talking about supporting, you know, a kind of density that works. It makes sense for what the infrastructure is.
Okay.
What else do we need to do this evening? I'm not trying to rush you guys. I am being protective of an employee who still has to drive to New Haven this evening, who's on this meeting right now. And I want to kick her out and get her in her car so she can get down here. But I'm just wondering what else we need to do this evening that maybe Will and I can cover and get her in her car and on the road.
Let her go.
You know, I feel like we've accomplished a lot and.
Bye, Lexus.
Get out of there.
Yeah.
We know where you're getting Lexus.
Thanks for a great meeting. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Careful.
Thank you, Mike. I have my own list of things I'd love to see, but I know some of them are not going to happen. That's fine. And I think we made a good amount of progress.
I agree.
And with a lot of agreement and consensus and.
I might throw one step further.
Yes, Mike?
Patty likes to be creative. There was talk years ago about adopting some kind of res, single-family residential zone lot sizes for the agricultural zone that has the water and sewer on Fairgrounds Road. Rather than maybe looking at an inclusionary overlay, going with something like that and being real creative.
Well, Mike, I don't think there's a problem with extend, let's just say for the sake of this argument, say extending the single-family residential district along Fairgrounds Road.
There was talk of that.
And I don't know that that's an issue, a problem. All we're saying is, you could have an inclusionary ordinance that kind of covers the single-family district, the multifamily district. Just, it's not going to be targeted in a particular area. It would just apply to any of those residential areas where you're saying if somebody wants to do an additional market rate unit, they would have to give you an affordable unit. So it's not necessarily saying that that has to be limited to Fairgrounds Road.
But we were also saying a moment ago, we were talking about potentially an overlay on Fairgrounds separately from the inclusionary ordinance, which would in fact look like single-family residential, except it would be an overlay rather than a changing the.
So they're still not getting bothered by the agricultural smells and all that, but still, they realize they're moving into the ag zone.
Cleric and still have our cows and that kind of stuff.
I think that's.
So I guess a question I have is, if in fact you want to extend the single-family framework, district framework, why don't you just put Fairgrounds Road in the single-family residential district?
It's because of there are agricultural uses on that road.
Got it.
The smells, the noise in the tractor in the morning.
Oh, those poor people who have to smell farms. I feel so badly for them.
Hey, it's their choice to buy the lot. They know it's there. We talked about that way back.
My only, I mean, I would assume anybody who already has a farm there would be able to keep their farm there. I would assume.
Grandfathered in.
I mean, some people might complain, but like, I don't see that going away. The one benefit, in my own opinion, of having that rather than the overlay is personally, I see a problem with the number of storage units going in where we have water and sewer that could be housing. And this would block that from happening. I mean, anything that's been proposed already is proposed already, but who knows if more of it's going to be coming down the line. And that kind of saddens me to see that it could be agriculture or it could be like housing, and instead it's storage units.
That would be terrible.
So, so this, I guess, would be a good sort of discussion question, maybe even on the 25th, is if you were going to, if you were going to create more development opportunity on Fairgrounds Road, what are the trade-offs going with an overlay versus extending a single? Extending a single-family residential district? And just see what people think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I agree.
I feel like they're going to tell you.
They will.
They will.
Now tell us. Okay.
Okay. We'll think about that.
We have an operating dairy farm on Fairgrounds Road.
I think that's what I was referring to, yeah.
The soils are amazing. It's still agricultural.
We have horses. Cody's got horses. Dow has cows, beef cows.
Yeah, farmland soils out there.
It's great soil.
Yeah. And I wouldn't want to see that go away, but at the same time, I'd much rather see dense housing than I would storage units.
What could we do to just take care of that, John?
Well, there's the ag zone, which is like the do-anything zone, which is part of the problem.
Maybe we'll stop there.
Yeah, you can keep that for another year.
I'm not saying we're going to change that. I'm just saying, if I had my magic wand.
We've done some good things tonight. Let's keep it on.
Yeah, let's just keep this on the high note, guys.
Moving right along.
Perfect.
Great meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Talk to you soon.
Bye, Judy.
Bye. Sorry to end there.
So that could happen, like, storage units out there?
It could, it is.
Already have storage units out there.
It is happening.
See, I don't drive that road enough.
We just approved some at the end of Page Street. And there's another probable application.
Yeah.
For an enormous, like, group of storage units.
October 19th.
Yeah. He's in between the mobile home park.
Yeah.
And at this point, like, any of that is fully within our zoning and as much as we may not like it.
Between the mobile home park.
We do need them too, but.
It's not our job to, like.
We call those little homes.
Just to be clear about that.
We're thinking about the snow plowing issue.
So, wait a second. So I will, where did my agenda even go?
Beach Hill Road intersection, just before that, on the right-hand side.
Well, that's one of the blackies.
Perhaps we can have a.
No, no, it's after.
Okay, side discussions.
Sorry, yes, yes, yes.
With my gavel. Maybe we can adjourn the HOP meeting first.
So moved.
So we're all done with that?
Excellent.
A second?
Oh, I second that.
All in favor on the HOP committee?
Aye.
Aye, okay. HOP committee is adjourned.
Thanks very much for being on board.
You can sit at the table if you want. You don't have to move right away.
Don't mind if I leave, do you?
Nope.
Text me.
Unfinished other business from board members and planning staff. I believe we have some maps and information. You mentioned earlier in the meeting already.
We do. We have another update. So I gave a brief update.
Thank you.
A few months ago about Wildflower Lane, which is the internal cul-de-sac in the Mountain View Farms development, which is the cluster subdivision off of Fairgrounds Road. It is, you know, Crescent Street, as it's commonly known. It was approved in 2006. It was, the approval was amended in 2012. The approval was a phased approval. We have a recorded phasing and development agreement with the developers. The town does and has since 2006. So under that agreement, the developer has the vested right to build out subsequent phases of the development. So the first phase was just the first two houses off of Fairgrounds Road. The second phase was all of Crescent Street, which is, or all of the private portion of Crescent Street, which is the blue piece on your map, the blue hash marks. So that's almost built out. So the developer has approached the town and said that they intend to begin constructing Wildflower Lane, which was approved but undeveloped, and it's sort of in the middle of the rest of it. So under the development and phasing agreement, they have the right to build it out provided that they pay in escrow for construction inspection by the town's engineer, which they have done, and they have established that account. So Mike Fignelli is contracted to inspect any construction of that road that goes on. And they've also met with the Water and Sewer District. It has, water and sewer lines would be built under the road as well. There's about a dozen lots out there, roughly. And it's, you know, so their intention, everything that we understand, is that construction could begin at any time. And we have, you know, verified and double and triple-checked what we have recorded, the agreement between the developers and the town. And even though it was an old approval, the way it was broken out in the phasing agreement is very clear that they maintain the right to develop in chunks like this. So, you know, I would say expect that to begin soon. The one piece that I think is extra important for the planning board to be aware of, which may not come up at all, but under the terms of the agreement, the developer has an option. The developer can either build the road up to spec before receiving any building permits or COs for structures on the road, or they can build a part of it and bond the rest of it. So if they were to, say they want to pull building permits for houses on this road before it was built, they would need to meet with the planning board and provide a bond for the difference between that, you know, the road construction costs that, of the remaining amount of work to be done to complete the road. So the reason behind that typically is, you know, if houses get built out there and the road goes unfinished, there's that bond in place to make sure that people aren't moving into houses and not having a road to get to their houses. Typically, that would be reduced in parts as the road is built out. That being said, it may not come up. The developer indicated that they intend to just build the road before they pull any permits. So it probably won't, but it very well could if they change their mind, which they have a right to do under the agreement. At which point, we would need, you know, the town's engineer would need to work with their engineer to determine what an acceptable bond amount. And they would also need to work with the planning board to determine that, how much the developer would need to put up as surety to verify that the road would be constructed in order for building permits to be able to be issued out there. So if you see that development starting to take place of that road, that is why. At the same time and in the same place, but unrelated, the developers have also made a request to the select board for the town to take over Crescent Street, which is almost fully built out. So that will, I assume, be working through the select board process. And I would, you know, draw your eye on that if you're watching the select board agendas and meetings, but sort of same area, same place, but separate issue. Wildflower Lane is not included in that. It's proposed to be built out as a private road right now. If it ever were to be proposed to be taken over, that would be a separate request at that time.
Could I just say on the record that as Wildflower Lane gets built, I expect to see gratuitous volumes of wildflowers growing there, so it can live up to its name.
I have a question for you. They provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
So the drainage plan, I should say, was part of the original approval. So there's SWIP, I don't know, but I'm assuming that they would need to get, I don't know if they need an AOT either, but they would need to pull any required permits.
I think the EPA is going to require it.
Yeah, it's an acre, right, a disturbed area?
Or, or, no, an acre, if it's part of a larger development, anything over an acre, and it's clear that they're in that jurisdiction.
Yep, so they would definitely need to, you know, and we have the town's engineer contracted.
Yeah, we need to have that planned.
Yep, the town's engineer has, so we do have the drainage plan, but the town's engineer has been contracted to make sure that they are.
They're changing the hydrology yet.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, that's, that's why the.
I can't think of anything else I could do with this property, really.
Say thank you, Neil, for actually making a meaningful comment unlike my own.
Excuse me?
So thank you, Neil, for actually making a meaningful comment unlike my own about the flowers.
Well, you know, with all the problems they've had with hydrology on.
I know.
The history, I think we should be consistent about.
We had a site visit just down the, just down the way, right? Talking about these issues. All right. Thank you, Joseph. I think I'm getting slap happy at the end of the meeting.
I wanted to make a comment. You know, Mike asked me about snow plowing. I really don't think people should be parking within 15 feet of the road because the town is pushing snowbanks back and you've got to have a place to put that snow. And if somebody's parked right, right there, you know, you can't plow them. That's just a comment.
This is a benefit of actually having the side parking pushed further back.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I know Mike's exempt, he's.
You know what?
You're exempt.
All right. Are there, are there public comments?
Total discussion this evening is about housing. And as I have said in several meetings before this, we really need to have a clear definition of types of houses because a lot of germs been talked about tonight. But it depends on the agency you talk to as to the definition of the structure itself. Mike alluded to this Concord and Manchester rehabilitating existing structures for residential uses. And I don't know if you people realize, but back in 2008, when the fire codes changed, the landlords came down here to get a permit from the town planner, which is, we deal with the International Building Code. And then that went up to the state, I mean, the town's fire chief, and it was disapproved. It turns out that the National Fire Protection Association and an International Building Code came together in 2008 and had the same description of reuse of existing structures for residential purposes. So it's chapter 34 in the fire codes, chapter 43 in the International Building Codes for changing a structure, say on Main Street, a business building, into residential. But now, if you get into onsite construction, terminology for a developer is key because if you would get into manufactured housing, a manufactured housing. if you were getting into manufactured housing, a manufactured housing is a unit that comes in on a trailer, assembled but has no utility system, whereas you buy the same house as a double-wide, you put it together and it's just hooking up the power, the water, and the sewer. And it's a complete, ready-to-go house, built to HUD code standard. So the definitions between the county, the municipality, the state, and the federal government as to the quote "character of the housing that you're trying to build," if you do not have the same description term, you can get into some lively debate and a lot of disappointments because in trying to comply, a person, a builder's going to come in, a developer's going to apply for a permit to do so under a label. And if he's getting state money or federal monies, he has to comply with their specifications, which may not fit ours. And this is why a lot of developers are saying, "You know what?" Saying elsewhere because there's no way we're going to be able to realize a proper return on investment for doing housing. So we really need a regulatory alignment of the terminology of the structure. You know, we've talked about the terminology of the occupant, whether they're seniors, whether low-income, workforce, pick a name. But it's the structure that has to comply. We really need to follow through on that. And then you need to put it in a manner which the citizens can vote on it to confirm what we've talked about tonight, which is a lot of good ideas. But if the citizens don't understand the terminology you put forth, they'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I, I will just say, there's one point of clarification. Our zoning ordinance, with some exceptions, deals more with uses than structures. And so when we're talking about like multifamily, for example, we're talking about a use more than we are a character of a structure. Although there, there are exceptions to that in Form-based Code and other stuff like that, but like, I don't want to start that conversation now. We can start, we haven't adjourned yet, right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There are no more comments in the public for us, right?
I know, no, it was...
Okay, so a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.